...County and she was from another country. And she just began, we began talking about some cultural issues and stuff and some things that she did with food and dance or whatever it was, just some general stuff. But then she started talking about just what an opportunity that she had when she came to this country and her parents encouraged her to come. Wasn't just, she decided if they encouraged her because they said this was the land where she with her personality would be able to achieve and excel. And where she was from, there was a difference. And as you mentioned, her father said, well, sometimes ladies could not advance as rapidly as could other people. And she says she was so thankful and she's so thankful that her children are here and they're able to take advantage of the equality that we give to people. So it was very boring to me and sometimes it tells you that you need to look at all things with the other person's eyes because we're used to seeing just with our eyes and our interpretation. And so now we take things for granted and she doesn't take any of them for granted. I appreciate that too. To share.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. And on that note, we'll send it to the pleasure of the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with all the liberty and justice of our own.
Next, we have the agenda. If you will look down for the workshop portion of it, we have C and D. I'd like to switch C and D where the State of the District, right, who comes before the discussion of the attorney contract of the U.S. and that's okay with y'all? It's always, uh, thank you. And with that said, we have the motion to conduct the agenda. Good afternoon.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Assistant Collins. Next, School Support Services, Mr. Bishop. No?
Good morning.
Good morning, Susan.
I am requesting the board to approve the instructional and support recommendations as outlined in the Goldenrod.
Second one to the White of the Goldenrod. As what Windle's son is said, is Doug's son?
No, it's Windle's son.
Windle's son, yes.
I'd like to actually approve the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Goldenrod.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Dodd, seconded by who? I'm questioning it to approve the personnel information instructional and support on the Goldenrod. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Sorry, opposed, carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Planning and Growth Management. Mr. Dixon.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This next item is a bit unusual, but typically we don't have disagreements with county staff on projects that affect the school board, but this one is one that could have a significant impact on the traffic at the La Canto complex. I'll go ahead and pass out the letter, explain what I'm asking for you to do today.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon, for providing all the background you did. In there, that was helpful.
Basically, I'm not asking the board to take a position on it one way or the other. Specifically, the issue is that the PD approval constitutes a final local development order so that when the Board of County Commissioners takes action on this item, it will have a development order vested for the 159 residential units. The reason why that's a problem for the La Canto complex is that a residential housing development, a high-density residential housing development has the same peak hour traffic generation time as the La Canto complex. And the traffic is headed in the opposite direction so that between 7:00 AM and 9:15 AM, 159 units are going to try and, are going to be trying to exit the housing development. At the same time, all of the employees and the students are entering the La Canto complex on the same road. And there's no traffic study that addresses that and no proposal on how that's going to be mitigated. And that issue was brought up at the Planning Board. Planning Board just makes a recommendation and they're recommending denial to the Board of County Commissioners based on other issues, but this particular issue needs to be addressed by the county before they take final action on the project. So my letter for the final public hearing simply reiterates what I said at the Planning Commission and points out the need for a traffic study and that's basically it in a nutshell.
Mr. Dixon, you serve on the Planning and Development Commission though as a non-voting member, is that correct?
Yes, I was appointed by the School Board to represent the School Board as a non-voting member.
And so the PDC, according to your information, voted to deny the application?
Yes, recommend denial. I think it was six to one.
Did they recommend the traffic study as well or not? The one thing you're talking about with the PDC there?
No, they didn't really specifically identify traffic as a major issue. I think their reason for recommending denial was more in terms of its location and proximity to the mining operation because there's an active mine that's right across the street and it's authorized to mine, I think, 200 feet from their property line. So these residents are going to be close to the mine.
But the concerns you brought to the PDC on behalf of the School District, double traffic in the right, is that true?
Yes, exclusively with traffic.
And the safety of our children.
Yes, and our employees and our buses.
Yes. Good.
So I just wanted to bring it to your attention and have you aware of the situation. And I did copy you when I sent the letter to the Planning Board. That flew different than the final action and I hope that the staff, I did have a conversation with the staff, but for some reason they don't believe that they can address public safety because they're linking it to concurrency, to traffic concurrency. And in my mind, they're two separate issues. It's a concurrency issue for sure, but it's more a public safety issue because it's not the level of traffic. If it was just a commercial project which actually generates more traffic, the traffic would be flowing in the same direction so it wouldn't be as much of a problem. But because it's a residential project and the traffic's flowing in the opposite direction, they're turning left when people are kind of coming in in the dark to the La Canto complex, that's the issue. The core issue is not the amount of traffic, it's the direction of the traffic and the fact that it's happening at the same time as the school traffic.
What do you mean by that?
I think just a vote.
Is that a consideration?
Yeah, just a proof letter to go out and I'll send it under my signature. Is that okay with the board?
And Mr. Dixon, I don't see that you're saying or indicating that, as we've talked about, we're not saying we don't want the project or we wouldn't be interested. There's, with regards to traffic, it's not to say something couldn't be mitigated.
Right.
And that there could be solutions to it. It's just that we're really not far enough along for us to be able to have it. There's not enough information yet.
Right, there's really no basis for approving it. It's over and above what's currently vested for that site. And before they take the step of adding traffic to that site, they need to know what the consequences will be and they need to know how it's going to be addressed because in my view, it's going to be costly to address that after the fact and it's going to have to be paid for by the county at that time after it occurs. It will be paid for by the School Board too, but mostly the county will be responsible because it's not on the School Board property. It's a county road. It's not a School Board road, but it's off-site and it's going to impact the school's facility and it's going to have to be addressed at some point. It, I think it will be a problem.
But could there be some potential cost to the district on that traffic issue or is it?
I think so. Depending on how it's resolved, the only other alternative access points would incur cost for the district. I mean, it wouldn't be just the county that would have to incur the cost. It probably needed a shared cost.
It would have to be negotiated.
Yeah.
Doesn't necessarily mean that you have to create it.
We don't know what it is yet. I mean, we don't know what the, there's a couple of different options that they have. They could limit the size of the project and then there wouldn't be as much of an issue. Or they could find an alternative access point, which I don't see in record that they've even explored. I mean, they haven't said that they, that they looked at alternative access. They may have, but they didn't, they haven't indicated that they've done that, which should be, first course would be to look for alternative ingress to that project.
So it truly is a safety issue when we deal with these times of the, of people coming and going to the Canto School Complex as well as that kind of matches when people are coming and going from a residential or essential complex?
And if it was low-income senior housing, it wouldn't be as much of an issue, but they won't commit to that. So if it was a senior housing project, there wouldn't be as much early morning traffic. But if it's a project where people live and work, you know, they're going to work in the morning and it's a problem.
And we already have a problem with traffic. With the travel.
Which certainly doesn't cause, I think, a lot of this havoc.
We did a traffic study there, I think, seven years ago. Sure? Yes. And that intersection, that's the G at the time, wasn't a failure, but it was rated as a Z, which is not great. So adding any traffic to there wouldn't, obviously never works.
And around the detours, which are a terrible problem. And then when you try to go through the Education Path, the 491, to go out and turn left, that's not pretty, really clear which lane to get as you begin with because you have the two lanes and you're not sure. But still, it's a problem turning. It's not, it's just, that's not built well. So to add more to that, I would say, the gridlock.
It's not only the level of traffic, but the direction of the traffic, the direction of the traffic at that time, you know, in the early morning hours.
So if we could recommend that 20% of the residents that go in there are teachers or county staff, we could probably make use of that right there. It'd be a great location for a teacher to live there and make.
That's another issue. There's no sidewalk proposed. Even the letter had, the last paragraph points that out. If there's any place in the county that needs a sidewalk, if you're going to put a high-density residential development that close to a park and a school and they can't walk because there's no safe way for them to get there.
And so if, you know, if they could mitigate these, I kind of agree with what Mr. Kennedy said. I'm not against the project, I'm just wanting to make sure, and that's kind of what we're pointing out to the board, is that, hey, we need to make sure that that's addressed, the safety issue, sidewalk issue is addressed in that. I think that's pretty much what the other services have.
I'm going to try to bring the letter to the Honorable Ron Kitchen, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners regarding the proposed development application number CPAAP U V sixteen dash eleven project located at the intersection of West Education Path and County Road 491.
Second.
Okay, it's to do with Ms. Bryant, Secretary of Education, to approve sending a letter to the Honorable Ron Kitchen, Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners to meet a stupid meeting for transmission, transmit all the time from November 1st, 2016, public meeting with the Board of County Commissioners. And the letter is to be tracked based on any additional urgency prior to October 25th, 2016. And it's regarding application number CPAAP U V dash sixteen dash eleven, Sheriff Phillips, Mark Patrick, Richard Phillips, project located at the intersection of West Education Path and County Road 491, acknowledgment of issues and consensus of concerns to the Board of County Commissioners consideration. All in, up to.
Yeah, I see the point of order. On the letter, there's another letter, Ms. Collins.
It is attached.
He's, he's attached. Do we need to include that? Is that, just assume that that's included or is that even necessary?
Consider. Consider. Okay, and I'll add the words, we attach them. Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, carries four zero. Thank you very much. And we have to have an attorney. And if this is going to the board, I'm sorry, Ron, Mr. Kennedy?
Not this one.
Mr. Dodd?
The only thing I would point out is that I did receive a letter today from Mr. Bass, from Cypress High School, Billy Bass, one of our National Law Certified Teachers who had some students that had written some letters to us as part of an assignment for American Government Class. So I've handed those out to you and it's good to see our students evolve in this process and I'm sure they'll be getting some answers from us.
I have something to pass out if you will. And this is from, actually, I buy some of the chronicles and it discusses the community elected leadership summit that we all attended. And now we, I'm attending meetings every three months with one commissioner. It's for, Ron Kitchen, Mr. Ron Kitchen. And then we had a couple of people from other areas of the Christopher and Emerys. And we're talking about things that are uncommon for all of us to be able to work on and brings everyone's attention. We had a meeting Friday and Mr. Kitchen handed out this information and he said, do you think we're all going to be interested in having another summit? We're all, no one in the school will come and ask for allies to work. I think that'll probably be true, but so we're all in agreement and we're thinking about January. And the chronicle in the, love the handout, he talks about the fact that communication is essential to the government, to make things work properly in the county. And I certainly feel so, I do feel that the group that we have together is making progress. Right now, we're working on getting a certain advertiser, sort of like a magazine put together for Citrus County to attract people who want to come here. And so they know about Citrus and they ask the School Board, they're asking the School Board, if we put something together to include it. And Mr. Kitchen said that when people decide where they're going to settle and they have children, the first thing they look at is how well are your schools functioning? And so they should have an answer. And we have a lot of things already prepared that we handed out to people and we're happy to share that with you. And then anything else that we have, and anything y'all want to share, we can bring it to the briefing and have it included in the magazine or whatever form that we should put out there, probably online too, making you happy, Mr. Kennedy, so. I have been interested in the eighteen, twenty, me of time on that. Okay, okay. In January, so I'll get back to you, I'll share your positivity with Mr. Kitchen and then I'll, I'll get back to you in a time soon. Appreciate that very much. Now, that's, this course opinion, be adjourned and we're going to go into the workshop. Does anyone need to stop for a moment? Let me ask you, as you look at the topics we have here, do you need any kind of lunch break? Are you okay to go on? We have doughnuts. I'm asking Mr. Dodd.
Wherever we are now, I guess the message they sent us though via email was that we have three and a half hours of State of the District today. So considering that, it's almost 10:30 now, we still have some more topics to do, we may have to leave that.
Okay, so.
We have to take a break.
So we'll look at it after overtime? After overtime, where you're like, alright, okay.
I don't have a problem too if we want to order any, just work, work through lunch too. I mean, so it's up to you, it's up to you all. Whatever works for you guys. I'm, I'm.
I think if, it's closer to 11 before we start the State of the District, then it would be probably a good idea if we could take a break and have a little snack.
Yeah, that would be good.
And we'll get together.
Okay, good, thanks for the suggestion. All right, with that in mind, we'll open the workshop portion of this meeting and we have also the view coming first. Chuck, I think you can.
Say you again, right? You're the heavy dishes of the day.
Yeah, you're the day. Starting with Policy 2.70, prohibiting discrimination including sexual and other forms of harassment. This is in the HR section. This is revision to Section 1A, additional categories added, Section 6, addition of timeline criteria. This was discussed by Policy and Forms on July 21st. And on page one of four, you can see.
Chuck, let's try to go back up to where it says document title and read what it has for document title. Policy 2.70.
Prohibiting discrimination including sexual and other forms of harassment.
The way that phrase just took my mind. I see that prohibiting discrimination, but I don't think sexual and other forms of harassment would discrimination.
Well, it's related. I mean, it's, you can discriminate based on a number of criteria and that's, they want to make sure that that's included. So that's how, it's not a new policy, it's just adding, it's an existing title.
An existing title meaning?
That's, this is the existing policy title prohibiting discrimination including sexual and.
And who made it? Is it our title or is it the title from the state statute?
I'm not sure of the origin of it. I mean, EMCS has recommended the changes to it. I mean, maybe Mr. Bradshaw knows the origin of.
It's TILF.
It was a document.
It might be, and the title is the TILF title. I know what it means, but it doesn't say.
And we talked about genetic information before, you know, that you don't discriminate based on information that you may have.
Yeah, I understand that. I would just say that what it says prohibiting discrimination and then it says including sexual and other forms of harassment, discrimination and sexual harassment, those aren't equal. Are you discriminating against people who have, who sexually harassed people? What I'm saying is not what it means.
Your office is the place for all.
I'm not, that is.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Can you just add some? On this particular policy, like Mr. Dixon said, the title has been the same for quite some time.
Yeah, that's incorrect.
This came about from the Office of Civil Rights when we do the Equity Report every year. This was a suggestion and a recommendation that the part about sexual orientation, pregnancy, and then it goes on to the next line, or genetic information, be added. We did not have that in our policy and they felt that it needed to be in there, especially with the sexual orientation because of the transgender and those types of things that.
And I understand the idea behind it, absolutely. We all supported that, but it's just the title doesn't make any sense. It's to prohibit discrimination including sexual and other forms of harassment, prohibiting sexual and other forms of harassment, equity discrimination doesn't make sense. If it was re-titled, it would make sense. Yeah, it very succinct with what it really means. Because this sounds like, well, someone.
I think the content of the title.
It's the title, not the content, it's just the way it's said.
Mm-hmm.
It's not, it doesn't quite, it doesn't make sense. And I know what's within it is fine. Okay, so yeah, that would be great if you could.
Tell us what you want to say.
Rephrase it, that's what I'm, I'm on the committee too. But this, this will go back to us, correct?
It'll have to come back, ready, what we do, to be approved for act.
Okay, well, yes.
You're just meaning maybe just prohibiting discrimination.
I would say prohibiting discrimination and harassment.
That, that is equal.
I don't know.
And if you could put including sexual, you know.
Don't put that word in there.
And you could say, yeah, and you could say including sexual harassment, that is equal to what it states.
And I had the Office of Civil Rights Conference this week, so that may be something that they would also discuss. They usually bring up the delicate topics.
Okay, so that would be fine, just so we have it worded the way we have it written. And then the body, so the Lord's representing, we have.
Strange as it sounds, if you don't put those things in the title, the auditors that are looking for those things, find them inside the policy but not in the title, they don't consider that a policy.
Oh, yeah. And we need to put it in, it's just phrase it differently so it makes sense.
I'm not saying it makes sense.
No, no, I can, yeah, I just.
I usually just use the search.
That's what Oliver's do. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dixon, sorry, just taking so long on that.
We'll look at the title and make sure we need to have it in there. Is there any other comments on this particular policy?
Everything else, well.
All right, the next one is Policy 5.55. Now, this is a new policy on involuntary examination under the Baker Act. We did add the term under the Baker Act into the title at the recommendation of the Policy and Forms Committee, so that's added into the title. And this was discussed by the Policy and Forms Committee in March. Are there any questions about the language?
Mr. Dixon, just want to hop back a moment. While I was looking at that, I looked over to the left on page four of four, what we just discussed, saw what was underlined, clarified, the document title, so I guess someone saw a need for clarification, maybe using the terms that they had there. But I'll stop on that.
See, we don't take public health home next to. Any other questions or concerns about 5.55? The next one is Policy 6.33, Alcohol and Drug-Free Workplace. This is a request to revise the policy at Section 4 regarding testing of employees. This was discussed by the Policy and Forms Committee on September 17th. So the new section is on page one, two.
So I've got a question on this one. On the reasonable belief, and I was hoping to be a little bit up that, I was fixing on Section A.
A.
For a employee maybe subject to drug testing based on a reasonable belief that he or she is using or has used drugs in violation of the drug-free workplace policy. So that reasonable belief is decided upon by the principal or by HR or?
You know, what happens is this, if there's a belief that we have an employee who's under the influence of drugs or alcohol, there has to be three factors determined visibly present. If the administrator at the time acknowledges those three, they contact HR immediately, HR along with a policy compliance officer, they go out, they do an assessment as well, a visible assessment. If they concur that there appears to be some, some form of impairment, we then take them for testing.
So there's not a single administrator or supervisor alone that's making that.
So there's not a single administrator or supervisor alone that's making that decision? It sounds like it goes through a series of processes that...
That is correct.
Leads to the compliance officer being involved in that decision.
That is correct. There's, there's agreement amongst multiple people before the testing takes place.
So there has to be impairment, a suspicion of impairment, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
So if there was a picture on social media of an employee using illegal drugs?
We would not have the, our practice would not allow us to do it, have it tested as a result of something being on social media, no, sir. It'd have to be visible in the workplace.
It depends on their employment. Well, now, if they were...
That's right.
If they were bus dogs, that would be, that would be grounds there.
Yes, it, yep.
It's a different standard because of their CEO licenses.
Because the way I read it before, so the drug and alcohol testing would be done for employees with the policy services, and you say employee maybe subject to drug testing based on the usual, maybe you say drug slash alcohol testing. And also, it goes off to say that is used or has used drug slash alcohol in violation of the alcohol or drug free workplace policy. Not just the drug-free workplace policy.
So just insert the word alcohol?
Well, yeah, because you basically, you're limited to just drugs. So you're going to want to, you know, give a balance of your policy.
Our SROs tell them, no drugs, alcohol isn't a drug. You know, just to push.
He's a mess.
Just to make it clear.
And they, you know, just to need to modify A, B, and C just to make sure it's consistent. And it states, it states the title of the policy also. Drugs and alcohol.
And then I had another question on number three, on notifying the supervisor. So what kind of threw me is that each employee shall notify his or supervisor of his or her conviction of any criminal drug statute or violation that says occurring in the workplace. What does, so if it's not in the workplace, if they get arrested for possession of meth and convicted, I mean, this is, this notification here is being with the conviction, their conviction in court. But why, can you tell me why it says occurring in the workplace?
Because the policy will build from the workplace. Now, if you have our other policies, sir, those go off the...
Right, but why if they're... So that says just so that we, the administration, would not realize they've been convicted in a court of law because the administration hasn't been following the case of it. So can you give me the, how that would apply? So if teachers is arrested?
I think because they don't understand what a teacher, that, so if they have some kind of violation that occurred in the workplace, they don't, they don't report it. I'm wondering if they report it, I'm sure they would follow.
Right.
If they don't report it, that's also going to be their violation of the policy. And so I'm assuming that's why we have it in there because we want to know within five days whether we're in charge of the position or whether we're not to do. Sometimes they're suspended without pay, it's on a, it's, it's, and so they don't have the full...
Sometimes they're suspended with pay, ending the outcome of conviction. And the, the may as most of the time, you may not know if they're in the, the, the trial. They may enter into a pretrial agreement with their attorney and the state attorney. What, what, somebody likes to tell us that. So we put down what Mr. Bradshaw said back in the 48 that it's our responsibility to modify the law.
But that's, but if they do pretrial intervention, they're not...
It's still a conviction, guilty.
It's still a conviction, it's still guilty. It's a request, they enter a...
If they have...
If they have a agreement before going to court, sometimes it's still guilty. A lot of times they have advanced elements of, of, and a true pretrial intervention. They may get a good hold, adjudicated guilty, not guilty for, they must, they're... They go to the guilty, the winning, so there's a question of, back in the court. They complete all the requirements that, that the purpose of PTI or the state, the state office of charges. It is a felony position. PTIs, they spoke on occasion, but a lot of times they didn't get a referral to court, which they, it's just monitoring and going through.
Okay, we're done. Any other comments on Policy 6.33? Moving on to 9.30, Community Use of Facilities. This item was discussed by the Policy and Forms Committee in September. And you can see the changes on page two of six. Basically, what we did was we modified the existing policy to, to fit what we currently are doing, so it's consistent. And Mr. Bradshaw added some language that's kind of highlighted. You can't really see it, but it's a little darker than the other language. So I'm glad to answer your questions regarding this policy.
The increase in commercial liability insurance for covering $500,000 to $1 million per occurrence, is, what's the impact that going to be on those groups that are currently using for school facilities involved? Do you hear that?
I don't think it's going to affect a lot of those people here. That needs to be updated because 10 years from being here. I think it's consistent, but those commercial carriers would be probably, they have...
I don't think we've had any issues with people getting...
We would actually have someone who had a $500,000 policy in place. Um, in Section 5C, there's wording having to do with after the fact billing. And I didn't understand, just, I mean, I...
That's, if we're, if we have like parks or recreation or county government or the YMCA using a facility and using it bill in after the fact as long as it's agreed about free.
Okay, so it's not, okay. I thought it had to do with needing to provide them an estimate.
Everybody else can make payments.
This one, we've got an informal agreement, so we can do that.
And that concludes...
I think we missed one.
Five, three, two, one.
Yeah.
That one I'm going to have to pass out to you because we did make a few changes to it. The Policy and Forms Committee was just heard last week. So your packets had to go to you before it was, and there's not, they're just minor changes, but I'll pass it out.
Yeah.
This one is with regard to students. We had, we did have a policy proposed for both employees and students. We broke them out, so we had a separate one for employees. And this is the one for students. And this was discussed by a Policy and Forms Committee on October 20th. I believe Ms. Albrecht is here, that she can address any questions that you make regarding this policy.
This policy, though, would impact students that are bullying? Or that's, I know we did this, but I need you to help me remind me. Or is this have to do with students not, students bullying staff members or the protection of the students? Because I know we changed, we broke some of the policies out, so that's what...
This is a policy for students and/or adults to report and learn from bullying incidents.
Okay, so it can cross?
Yes, sir.
And I guess theoretically, could a staff member report that a student bullying them as part of this new policy and that would initiate an investigation or potentially could initiate an investigation? And that process can follow? Yeah, I just, I'm just the instrument. I was just trying to understand if this was the instrument that...
So let's just go over the cyberbullying though real quick. Because I know at the last FSBA conference service and talk, there was an issue on cyberbullying. So that has to impact the child, it has to impact a child's school performance in order to be, in order for one child to be disciplined for cyberbullying, there has to be a correlation to school in some regard, right?
Yes, it has to happen on the school premise or it has to roll over onto the school environment. If it happens over the weekend, but then it continues with maybe two people arguing over it and it overflows into the school environment and disrupts the school environment, then the school can look into it.
But that just has to do with jurisdiction, though. As far as the school's jurisdiction, that wouldn't prohibit a parent from making a complaint criminally or to the sheriff's department of saying, my child is...
Cyberbullying is a problem.
It's a, right, so that, it just has to do with our jurisdiction as a school district.
For school district.
We would, right, we would then have, we would not be involved in that if, let's say, they come on campus and they're just as kind as they can to each other and nothing happens, which I know can be the case sometimes. Unless they're doing it through our network on school property or that it somehow impacts the school day and is brought onto the campus.
They post something and everybody in the cafeteria is like, oh, it's a problem.
We have a, then we...
Then it falls under our jurisdiction to discipline.
And I think what, I know when I've gotten comments from parents aside from referring to your office, Regina, in that situation, it's have you contacted the sheriff's office? If it's something that doesn't necessarily lead on to our jurisdiction. And that's always, I guess, what we would say would be something we would encourage them and talk to the, the SRO, which is usually one of the first lines and then end up those grids as well.
If there was an online comment about something that's going to happen at school, then that obviously is that correlation for the school to take, to look at and investigate and take this into action.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
Are we tracking that? Do you, I mean, we have, I think there's, well, one of the things that we had code, the way that's supposed to be put in, right?
Right, if it's substantiated or unsubstantiated.
So we are tracking?
Page 11, yes, sir, we are.
Yeah, there is B U L or H A R code.
Correct, or the U V L for unsubstantiated, or the U H R for substantiated arrest.
Okay, and now, has that, are we already doing that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We can report later on today in our presentation.
That concludes our policy review for today.
And I would say that this year in all the policy and forms, all of the stuff's got over, 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 back that point, the title, I missed that. And I might not bend it, I take about, I hope I've missed that one, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Okay, next we have overtime regulations.
Just you know, the last one, they asked about some...
Good morning again. This morning, we are going to go over the timeline of how we put those changes into place. The first phase, Phase 1, we made those changes in August of 2015. We looked at all of those employees that were exempt. Did they have two or more employees that they supervised? If they had two or more employees that they supervised, they continued to be exempt with that $23,200, or $660 threshold for salary. So they had to make more than that $23,000 threshold and have two or more employees that worked for them. When we put those requirements in place, we had 88 employees that moved from exempt that were then eligible for overtime. Phase 2 is coming December 1st, 2016. In Phase 2, the US Department of Labor increased that salary threshold from the $23,000 mark to $47,476. So that was a huge increase in what our employees who were then exempt could not make. They had to make less than that $47,000 or they were eligible for overtime. When we put that into place, we haven't put it into place yet, but as we looked for it and prepared to put that into place, we discovered that 35, or found that 35 to 40 of our employees who were previously exempt from overtime will now be eligible for overtime. And this includes employees in our food service department, in our district student services departments, and in our transportation departments that are now eligible. We spoke, so our timeline was, once we found this information and identified those people, we shared with the directors, coordinators of those various departments that their employees would now be eligible for overtime. We discussed the impact of the district. During those discussions, the directors and coordinators shared that there would be no financial impact. They did not foresee any financial impact to the district as they put safeguards in place where they would allow their employees to have comp time. And then within, we have a system set up in our district where if, at that time, if they have not used their overtime or their comp time, they would be eligible for overtime. But the comp time and/or overtime must be pre-approved by those directors and coordinators. So we do not foresee, the directors and coordinators felt that they would be able to meet, meet their work expectations or work responsibilities within that eight-hour time period during the day. So they do not foresee any financial impact.
Yes, what a person's doing with overtime. Is it something that they deem necessary out of finishing a court? They're going to have to work a couple of hours? Or is it something that supervisor needs to make the call?
Supervisor should approve all overtime.
Correct, the supervisor will approve it. If there's a, if there's a concern that there may be overtime or they may see the eight-hour workday, they would go to the supervisor ahead of time and make that decision together. Is it something that they can distribute out to someone else? Or, and they would have to pre-approve that time?
And we train our principals and all our supervisors to look at those kind of things, too, because, you know, sometimes employees just want to get the job done and they'll work later. Well, we're still obligated to pay them overtime even if they did that without permission. But then it becomes a disciplinary issue because they're not following proper procedures. So we try to avoid those situations. But even if they, if they were just to stay on their own at work, we would be obligated to pay them for that and then deal with it as a discipline. Is that correct, Mr. Regent?
So they could not say, yeah, that, because it does involve tomorrow, the...
They're not supposed to do that. If they did that, we would be obligated to pay them, but then they would not be following proper procedures and then they'd open themselves up to a disciplinary issue.
We can also flex their time during the week as well. We have that authority to do that. So if they needed to stay a couple hours extra one day, we could flex their time and allow them to leave early one day as well, as long as it's within that work week, correct, we are able to do that.
And Skywork with True Time helps us control that a lot better than we've ever been able to do.
Correct. We have not had any issues that I am aware of and I would, and I would know if we had any issues regarding employees that worked overtime that had not been granted permission to do so.
Does the employee have the choice to pick between overtime and comp time? That's a supervisory decision.
That is a supervisory decision.
So the issue with comp time, though, is that the employee has the right to take that time off whenever they need. that time off whenever they deem appropriate, correct?
Whenever it's approved by the supervisor.
A reasonable amount of time.
Correct.
A reasonable amount of time, we have to give them the opportunity to use that, but it's not whenever they, they still have to get it approved by supervisor. I was under the impression that the comp time issue is different than the vacation approval. Is that not correct?
No, they have to have it approved, the comp time. Needs to be approved by the administrator.
Are we sure of that?
Yes.
In federal, all federal rulings?
I can check federal rulings, yes.
I like to.
We certainly do that.
What about the line of duty, in six to hours for an hour?
In line of duty, refers to workers' comp.
Okay.
Yes. You're welcome. And currently, we will still, once we put this into place, is it December 1st, we will still have 10 employees, approximately 10 employees, that will still be exempt, are in support employees, that will still be exempt from the overtime because of salary. Again, our instructional personnel and our administrators, because of salary, are exempt, because of the language, the ruling, are exempt from receiving overtime as well.
And so, you said this is not going to impact, the supervisors have agreed that this is not going to impact the budget, is that what you just said?
Correct, that is correct.
So we're going to have to pay some overtime?
They were not foreseeing that we would have to pay overtime.
So they're going to be able to flex and comp time those employees?
Yes. That is my understanding when we spoke to the directors and coordinators.
Or I'm assuming, and work doesn't get done, is the other way that that'll have to be handled for it not to impact the budget, and that's, what I'm saying, that's the wrong?
Or in some cases, administrators pick up the slack.
Or administrators.
Correct.
It'll have to be spread somewhere.
That is correct.
But I was going to say, I don't think it's probably only, that they're, they're able to control it, but it doesn't, the way they can not impact the budget is much easier.
We don't have a choice but not to impact the budget, because there isn't, there isn't any, and the budget's impacted, so. So I think we're going to look at limiting the hours of comp time, because if the employee leaves with comp time, we're going to be required to pay them for comp time, right? And they have to use their comp time a reasonable amount of time. We've worked with the attorneys to determine what that reasonable amount of time is, but you're right. So we do limit comp time, too, because again, even if we didn't have to compensate them financially, they're, they're out of work, so you just really get yourself back in another situation. And when they come back and use the comp days, they have to work past their 40 hours to try to get caught up on what didn't get done, and you're never out of that vicious cycle. So we try to use it only in cases where it's an emergency and we have no choice, but we have to use it, but in most cases, we're discouraging that. We've given all of our school principals a small discretionary amount of overtime money to use for those situations, so that we don't get in a position where we have to use comp time as a resource.
And our directors and our coordinators do supervise, and our principals do supervise that very closely. In Skyward, we are able to go in on a daily basis and monitor and see which employees have comp time that has been allotted to them. So we are able to monitor that, and we do monitor that very closely. Again, and it has to be pre-approved, so we are aware of that. There's a paper, documentation, paper trail for those requests and those approvals for comp time and/or overtime.
No, this has been a, a work to get through to this. I was a little surprised, I serve on two not-for-profit board of directors, and I was surprised to learn they're struggling with this. And it's impacting a lot of not-for-profit organizations, because they're happy to meet what we know is True Time, and it's impacting them, because they don't have resources to be able to pay these people who would do it, and they're not allowed to let them just, like, donate the time, and it, it's a complicated situation.
That's very sad, and you said perfectly, it is very complicated. This person is trying to finish up what her job is, and yet, although it's going to fall into discipline, we're doing our work. So that's just that.
Or we have to have a budget just to pay them, and we can't do that.
Yeah.
And you're right, in most of those cases, they're just dedicated employees that are committed and wanting to get a job done. Unfortunately, we don't have the funds to pay them, and we can't allow them to work for nothing, or volunteer their time. So it's been a learning process for our supervisors, it's still a learning process, we still get questions about it, but, you know, our support staff, our hourly employees, in most cases, cannot volunteer their time doing a skill that they get paid to do during the school day. In other words, we get the question a lot of times, when a church wants to rent a facility, and one of our custodians goes to that church, can't he do the cleaning without billing the church? No, they can't, because he can't volunteer his time to do what we pay him to do during the school day. So we can't do that.
So a person could, let's say, they have a closing letter, or we give them some of the school sign, the secretary could volunteer time to do that, not the secretary, they could volunteer to do that, is that correct?
They're not doing secretary or worker, no duties that are related to their job during the school day.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Because secretary, she is, I'm willing to, but she wasn't really doing, she's okay.
Okay, next we're going to have, say, this, but I'm going to ask you, does she want to take a short lunch break?
My recommendation would be you break down and then come back together, that way we can go straight through with this.
Okay, well, yeah, okay.
If that's okay.
That is great, really. How about you? Okay, then we'll be back in 10.
Well, let me stop this camera gun.